Corpo Order of Need for the Brookline Select Board for February 21st, 2018. The time is 6:32. Any changes to the agenda?
Negative.
Were you gonna switch the road?
Well, there is no road form in here to do that with.
Yeah, so maybe we should jump into it.
Okay. Otherwise, we should go on. So then, we shall go to approve the minutes in the February 8th, 2018 regular meeting, which was held on the 8th because of the snowstorm on the 7th. Go to the first page of three. I noticed, I guess, November 1st, 2017 under approved minutes in the last meeting. Should have said January 17th, 2018.
Where are you?
The header for...
Approved the minutes from the last meeting held on Jan... Should have said January 17th, 2018.
Yeah. Yep, okay, got that.
And see anything else on page one? Move to page two. Just saw nothing on page two. Anybody else? No? See none? Go to page three. Looks in good shape? Hearing no other changes, I'll accept the motion to un... Can I make the motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes of February 8th.
As amended.
As amended.
Second?
Seconded by David. All, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the February 8th minutes as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes accepted as amended. Scheduled members of the public, there are none. Unscheduled members of the public, there are none. Summary updates and reports. Mr. Tanza, town clerk, what's new in town? New homes or sales?
Basically, I just want to remind people that their dog licenses are due by April 1st, and we will be having the rabies clinic on the 17th of March at the New Brook Fire Station from 10 until 1:00.
March 17th, is that right?
And that's it.
Sorry, what was the time again?
10:00, 10 o'clock in the morning till 1:00 in the afternoon.
And all dogs must be in leashes or cages.
And they can also bring cats, too.
Yes, dogs and cats.
All right, and we'll advertise that, I guess, on the listserv. All right. Next, I have here Doc Maggiotown Meeting Questions and Answers. I have a question about the appropriations bundle. I found one from a couple of years ago where we made a pile, we made a collection of the appropriation letters that came in from the different...
That's what we're gonna do this year.
That's what I was gonna ask. Is that going to be done?
Yeah, it's gonna be done in a binder or a stapled-together...
Packet.
Packet with all the appropriations.
Oh, okay.
And the letters from the people and so forth.
Excellent. That was the question. And David Parker, who may wanna... I'll contact David Parker, see if there's anything he needs from us beforehand as a moderator. Okay. Let's see, are there any other questions anybody might have about the town meeting?
I've had a few calls. I've had a few calls with some people wanting to put surveys in the back of the room on a table, and I said it would be okay. And they asked if the moderator would mention. I said I will mention to the moderator, but it's really the discretion of the moderator.
Okay. And I will do a listserv, the time and reminder.
Are you gonna put it on the front porch?
And front porch form.
And emphasize the 9:00 start.
9:00 AM. And Sarah Webb had volunteered to coordinate the luncheon. I will go, probably contact Sarah. She's dealing with some health issues with the kids in such a home. Sarah Webb.
And reminder, the same day as we're having the voting here...
The what?
On the same day as town meeting is the voting here for the directors of the school board or something.
Could tell Sarah that?
No, I'm just reminding everybody that on that...
Yeah, there'll be an Australian ballot on the same day as town meeting.
Should I advertise that, or is that something the school does?
The school should. I would think the school would be the responsible...
To be in charge of advertising, or...
Yeah, I don't think you should worry about that.
Okay. David Parker. All right, that's all I have for questions or concerns about town meeting. Anybody else? Okay. Next is Doc Maggiot Dog Hearing. We had our dog hearing at 6:30. No, is it 6:30? On the 8th, and we recessed to a date and time of 6:30 February 28th, which is Wednesday. At that time, I spoke to the respondent, Beverly Waters, last week. When we had the hearing, she wasn't feeling well. So I wrote to her, I also left a voicemail that we encouraged her to come. We will take any evidence that she has on the 28th. So that's... You have something to say?
No.
Okay. The next one, I'm your town plan hearing by the select board required. I got a call from John Bennett from Wyndham Regional Commission, and he said that while reviewing over our town plan, we've done everything correctly, that there wasn't a hearing run by the planning commission, and residents did come out, and we did adopt on the 17th the town plan, but he feels that there was one step that was oversighted, and that would be that the town, the select board needs to have a hearing, but it has to be warned 15 days ahead of time. So when I spoke to him, I had thought that we could do it next week, but it wasn't 15 days. So my question is, it's a short hearing. When would be a good time to do it? Of course, this is us here, so I don't know if we wanted to do it at the beginning of this... Actually, we can't.
That's not gonna be enough.
No. So it would have to be either...
It'd have to be the meeting on the 21st.
Or any other night that we wanted to meet for half an hour.
So if you warn it, when do you have to warn it?
15 days ahead of when it's going to be. It has to be warned in the newspaper.
Just so you give the town opportunity to complain.
To come in and say it. And if there's no, you know, it could be a 15-minute hearing.
So 15 days is March 8th.
So we couldn't have, yeah, so that would be the earliest we could have a hearing. If I got it in the paper tomorrow, and I won't get it in the paper today, I'll get it Saturday.
Right, so really, then realistically...
We couldn't do it the 4th. We won't...
No, why don't you do the 21st, just for the meeting?
Yeah, if there isn't a...
Don't do a half an hour.
If there isn't a time, if there isn't a reason we need to do it before the 21st, I would propose we do it as the beginning of the meeting.
Do it at 6:30.
Or do it separately in advance of the select board meeting.
Just do it 18 minutes. We're just gonna sit here and wait for people to come.
Can it be warned as, can they, so basically, we would start, we would have the hearing at 6:30, and then select board during the hearing and continue with the select board.
That's fine. Is that how we like, that'd be fine.
I think that probably would be easiest for everyone.
For 15 minutes.
March 21st, 6:30 hearing for the town plan, followed, which will precede the select board meeting. Okay, that's fine. And I'll advertise it that way.
You might wanna also bring the planning commission into the loop to let them know.
I will, yes. Tom and the commission. I'm sorry, Dave, what did you say?
No, no, I was just gonna say, I mean, does that work for you? Does that make sense for you?
That's fine.
Okay.
So that way, it gives you plenty of time to get it into the paper.
Paper. All right. All right, we're moving along here. So the next one would be to enter an executive session, but we're gonna skip that right this, at this time. Let's move down to highways and roads. We do have a, I have a forms to sign for the grant agreement to be signed to the select board chair, and then return to the treasurer for the grant application for the shed. And if you don't mind, I'm just gonna sign it now. We don't need to vote on it, but while it's in my hands, I have a few extra seconds.
That's the insurance certificate, is it?
It's an assurance, insurance certificate, correct. February 21st, 2018. All right, so that is signed, and is available for us.
That's for tomorrow, right? We're gonna put down some more, just...
Thank you. All right. So then, we can go down to...
Can I just ask, it's not really, I mean, it isn't a real thing, but can I just ask, as far as we know, I mean, we saw the email from Archie about how we got salt, whenever it was, two Fridays ago or something like that. Have we, has there, have we heard anything else from Archie or Mark about us having any shortage of salt and sand at this point?
No, salt was delivered. There was a concern that the ratio of salt to sand mixture was too rich, and that the person who does this, that Mike had put too much salt in the sand, which ran out. But Archie had thought that there was only 100 yards of sand delivered, and so, but actually, we had 228 yards of sand delivered. So the ratio, if he thought it was twice as concentrated, we had more than twice the amount of sand delivered. So he probably was, so the ratio was pretty close. He complained that there was 100 yards of sand mixed over with salt, but we actually had 228 yards of sand mixed with the salt.
All right.
That was it, so. Well, I have not heard. And Archie did send us an email saying that we was out of town at that time. All right? But if we hear anything, we'll bring you up. Thanks for reminding me about that. You can't enter into executive session at this time, since we are a little bit ahead of schedule. So at this time, I'd like the select board to enter into an executive session at this time to obtain legal advice on the town matter. I would also like to include our town agent, Guy Tanza, to be included in the select board's executive session at this time, who was reasonable when we were finished. Thank you. All right, I'd like to make a motion to bring the select board out of executive session. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David. Any objections? Anyone? All those in favor resuming regularly agenda? At 7:46 PM, see if you have any saying aye?
Aye.
No actions are taken based upon our executive session at this time. Okay, so we're down the agenda. We spoke about highways, current salt shed, new business, Mr. Mello, Sunday Lane Daycare improvement?
This is what I'm thinking. Let me back in there. I'm thinking that on April 4th, we should discuss what we want to do for a plan for Sunny Lane Daycare for this year. Other than that, by that time, we'll know, I think we've got over $5,000 in the budget right now. We're in the process of resolving the water issue. That seems to be going pretty well, right, Doc? We're only, oh, it looks like a couple of grand, or seven dozen, because things are going really well with that. Actually, a part of that, talking to Scott Boba about leads me into the church, which I won't get to, that's not a part of this. Then I bumped into Randy Levitt a couple of days ago, and he's willing to keep, he's willing to take a look at, he was on Tapu Tsui, local contractor, I don't think he owned...
Know his name.
Yeah, he and his father built the addition on my house, which is a 12 by 20 onto on my lot of home, and he might have been all for that. And really competent, really good, and straight shooter with the money. There's no BS in that. Well, Randy said he'd come over and take a look at it. Doc and I've already talked about it a little bit, about the rot, and what we talked about last year, the rot, and the soffits and all that stuff. We've already been around that corner. And to get an idea of what that would cost, Randy thought, man, do it now. I said, no, Randy, no, just to give us an idea, I didn't get into anything about bidding with him or anything like that, because your and I's discussion intent was to keep it under seven grand, and if we, which we might be able to do without the materials, and do the material separately. And I did all my materials when he did my work. I ordered all, he told me, yeah, I just went and got it, and make sure I had enough, and I didn't have enough, we got them worn. He's very meanable that way. Of course, it's been, it was 2006, I think, that he did, it was 2004, anyway, it was 11 years ago. I believe it's 2006 he did that. But anyway, he's gonna, when I get a minute, I'm gonna call him, and have him come over and take a look at that, and see what his plan is for the year, and whether he could fit it in, on the approval of the board to do what's needed to be done around those areas. And then, kind of duck telling him of that April 4th idea, where we can analyze and discuss going forward, what we'd like to do with the building for this year. Because we have a budget created by Tina Bells and Barbara Ford, Fix Building.
Yeah, I have a friend, we had sent out last year a request, a request for proposal to do some work over there, but because it was so late in the season, there was nobody available.
Right.
And that particular bid, we looked at the cost of materials should be factored into the bid, as well as the removal of the debris and such and so on.
What were you talking about, did it that way?
Right. That was, I guess, we, we wanted the work to be completed before September 1st, and this was, yeah. We, it was a problem with trying to get people to commit at that time, late, late in the season. We do have to be careful, we have to check if the project about bidding, because I don't know if we can separate. I'd have to look to see if we can separate the materials on the labor or for...
But in the meantime, I'm gonna get him over a look at it, too, since, 'cause he can give you a pretty good idea of man hours and costs in terms of man hours, and I can report all back to all of you guys, and get, give everybody an idea of $4,000, is it $10,000, is it $5,000?
So he might be submitting to us a bid to do this, no, he might be submitting to the town, the select board, a bid to do this work.
Might.
Yeah.
Might be operative word. I hadn't approached him that way. I just approached him to him about, look, and I said last year, well, I tried to work it in, I thought, you know, it just like, wasn't talked about in the bid way. It was talked about doing the work, but I haven't gotten to that discussion with him, but when he comes, and I didn't want to, and so he made the commitment to go over and look at the building, and then at that time, I could explain to him, look, the purchase agreement has to be under seven grand. Goes up seven grand, we have to put it out to bid.
You want to put this on the April 4th agenda, you're saying?
As a part of that discussion, but I'm gonna have, yes, because I'm gonna have Met him, hopefully, waiting for that, and hammering the details, if you like to talk about it.
All right. So I'll...
We can go down.
Unreal.
Yeah, all right, that's the first weekend in April.
I wonder if in advance of that, well, or maybe at the same time, but I almost wonder if we should try to, in advance, if we should suggest possibly having Samara and have a discussion about, to your point, what do we...
What's available.
What's available, what can we actually afford to spend on work, because we have the water stuff.
Good point.
We need to, we really need to develop a budget for that building for the coming year, and figure out what we're already obligated to spend money on, and what is, you know, what we could have for...
In our help game, the paperwork, and I talked to Samara, 'cause there was a conflict about the, about my understanding about what the church had for balance, and what she had sent out was obvious. It was through January. It was at the end of January. And in particular with the church, was that the grant hadn't been included in the total that she gave me, and that was what that was about. But what you're talking about, it's right. So we're at about $5,300 at the end of January, but isn't it another $2,100 that we are gonna have to spend, Doc, for the water system over and above the deposit, something like that, or is it $2,100?
Yeah, we have an estimate from Scott Boba that we, that the algebraic system is in operation, and it is in operation right now. It's a system up and running, and what's there?
Yes.
We have to buy some new UV bulbs for backup, and what the plan is that we'll be getting from Beck will be comparable for a backup to that system, which is a chlorination system, but we don't have to install that, because our UV system is now working.
But I wanna, I wanna say one thing, which is excellent, that has to be brought up, is I really need to wave the flag of Scott Boba, and the way he helped, and what he did, and the price he gave, and the time he gave on that Saturday when I let him in, and flush out the system, make sure it was working good, and got it up and running, all for a lousy $200. Excuse me.
$200, I'll take that for a while.
Excuse me, is this the existing system that was there?
Yes.
So now that is functioning?
That is up and on the line, and functioning.
So we don't have to have an engineer?
No.
We do have to have an engineer to develop the backup system to that, which will be the chlorination tank.
If it fails.
But we don't have to install it, because we have a system right now, and we are not failing. There are, has been no bacterial pest, and so we are...
Yeah, but it's usually in August that we get the failure.
And, and he set up a maintenance procedure for it. He's told us how to do it, what to do as far as protective bulbs for backup, and when to change them, and he can go in concert with them. He's been great.
Oh, yeah, no, no.
Mark Bills, in order to do the maintenance every year, or whatever it needs.
That system is up and running now. The wall's working.
No, I just wanted to be able, so the community can understand what's going on up there with the school.
But that, that's it, and it's working.
It's working, and if it stops working, there's gonna be an alarm going off, and we'll get a...
That's right. So, but right now, we're in compliance.
We are in compliance.
I think there's a problem with that. And I should, and I thought of that in fact, Dr. Scott. Who's gonna hear the alarm? It's in the basement.
They'll hear it in the basement, because they use that...
Oh, they use it enough, you want to hear it?
They announce it every day, and all these others from the kids.
Okay.
But we need to probably talk to Tina and tell her about the alarm.
But back to what you were saying, Dave, we gotta counterpeace.
Oh, he's gonna try to...
You're right, I wanna do it, I'm like, I don't spend, we're gonna spend $100,000 on your Randy Levitt next month, but we only got three. No, we don't want to do anything like that.
No. And if we need, if we do need to take a loan out of something else, we can discuss as well.
Yeah, we can do it, ush. We know how long we've got our lease, even if she didn't complete her lease. I mean, if she, excuse me.
Didn't renew it.
Didn't renew it. We're good till...
We can anticipate.
Yeah, we have, we have until the end of June of 2019, then she's got her lease, but she has to, she has to give us notice in December.
Right.
So from that standpoint, we know how much money we've got that's already coming in.
We have nine, we're going to have about nine months.
But we don't want to spend $20,000 on windows.
Right.
Which is what the problem that I was having with this whole issue with the water system, because we didn't know what we were gonna have recommended from her, and we're spending the system, all this money on the system.
And so it's good that things are going well with water system in comparison to what they do at that time, that's very incredible.
Correct. All right, so April, April 4th, you want me to put on the minutes, the agenda to discuss the Sunny Lane Daycare Improvement Plan for 2018?
Now, does anybody on the board want to be notified, and of course, Scott can't ask Chris, if, when I meet with, with Randy?
You can shoot me an email out?
I'll let you, I'll let you all know.
We only have two people.
Right, you can't have three.
Yeah, you can't have three.
All right, the form? Oh, we need more.
So shoot me an email out, and, and the first one?
So Chris and I will volunteer not to come. I'll volunteer for Chris, I'm sure he's not... He's not gonna be there.
But there is some new legislation in regards to the open meeting law about having more than two or three people.
Is that it?
Yes.
They're gonna change it?
There's some talk about it.
There must be some bitching about it.
If you want to discuss something and do something that, you know, that's part of the, you don't vote for anything, but basically, you can discuss things, you know, projects that you're doing, because the open meeting law...
That sure makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah, really.
Yeah, 'cause what if you...
So there is some...
We had the work beat, and we had the corn, where we had to, we did, but we advertised it, that we were all been meeting and cleaning it two summers ago.
Like you said, the bottom line is when you're not, when your intention and your actions are not to conduct any business.
Right.
You're confined with the spirit of the...
Right. When they have this, people prosecute anybody on that law, you have they?
All right, well, let's move on, then. Very good, Chris, thank you. Now, we're gonna talk about, we have a review, a job, a job description for the Sunny Lane Daycare property management position. I had given out to you last week, an initial draft on the, for the... Yeah, we appointed Mark Bills, but we needed to have a job description for it. Do you remember when I gave it to you?
Yeah, I got it, but I read it, but I didn't do anything with it.
Well, if you saw, here, I have the, here.
Yeah, I have a copy of it at my desk.
This, we wanted to, I thought we would... I have that. Some of the responsibilities, inspect, I had a couple to add to it. Inspect on a monthly basis all fire extinguishers, record the water uses at Sunny Lane Daycare monthly, and submit the forms to the proper authorities. Three, to complete the tasks that mitigate any hazards identified inside and outside of the building. Four, to ensure that the building is safe for the children at Sunny Lane Daycare. I wanted to add, five, to run the water taps monthly for, what's it called, purging? Is that what I would say, purge the water?
Yeah, that's a good term. Purging is another, well, the term for bleeding the system, actually.
Urge or bleed, I don't, okay. And number six would be to, to evaluate, to run, maintain the UV disinfection.
And, yeah, it's, I know what you're doing, we don't have, we're not having any of this problem with, with Mark, with the responsibilities, but if you ever had somebody else do it.
Yeah. So I would then, I'm gonna, since it's not gonna be typed, I'll put it back on the agenda for another meeting, but if anybody can think of anything else. And this is not, this is not an ordinance or anything on...
Right, it's just the evolving...
...job description can be modified on a regular basis.
Doesn't he also check it to make sure, doesn't he check things, like if he notices a bulb's out, or...
Oh, he's doing that kind of stuff.
Bulb?
Well...
You know, lights, or notices a door's not closing, or, I thought he said he checks...
He...
Didn't he?
He's still...
Well, okay, ensure that the building is safe.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. I think in practice, he may see some things and resolve some things additionally, but that's probably not...
He's not the janitor, or, he's not Tina's employee.
No.
He's our employee.
Right, so that's, yeah, that comes in.
Yeah, that might be a good point, to clarify with him, that him to understand that he isn't...
Well, he's gonna come, yeah.
Yeah, we're kinda saying that he understands, that we understand that he is not under auspices, he's under... If there's an issue...
She needs to come to the select board.
Same with him.
The select board will then direct Mark to do something.
And same with Mark, if he's got a problem that happens down there.
Correct. So I'll rewrite, retype this, and then we'll just have it, and next one, next time, we'll briefly just go over it, and at that time, we can accept this. Is that all right with you?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you put the Richard line on there?
No, it's a job description.
It's a job description.
Right, you don't have to sign.
Exactly, okay.
It's just an explanation to him, and letting him understand.
Yeah, and I had, I had a webinar on employment, how to do job descriptions. The next job description that we're gonna have to work on would be for the road supervisor. That doesn't come into effect until after July 1st. I had to, I had contacted New Thing, Thing has sent me their job descriptions, and I'll put, I'll give you some samples, and anybody can add to them, and I've got some things off of the listserv as well, on job descriptions for supervisors, supervisors for enforcement, or improvement, so.
So, we can talk about this, I'm, and I apologize, I didn't, I forgot about this, I didn't really read through it until now, but there's, I have an assortment of... I have an assortment of changes, probably just like type of things and clarifications.
Oh, email me, sure.
I will, but a question I have now that I'm reading this, though, is... Do we want this, because it's a little conflicting in places, but do we want this to be the property? It's the Sunny Lane Daycare Building Property Manager, right? It's not the Town of Brookline Property Manager.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we're gonna change that and all of it? Because there's a lot of things that refer to multiple buildings, say, buildings in the plural and stuff like that. And which, I don't know how much we wanna actually take this into a ability to develop, plan, and timeframe to complete projects needed at the building.
It's just for the one...
We're really just wanting it to be...
Job descriptions that I was pulling together. So, yes, please correct, I said it to me.
I just wanna make sure I'm not confusing what we're trying to write.
As I begin.
That's all right. Okay, cool.
Perfect.
Right.
Okay, job description. So now we're going to old business. Brookline Meeting House Discussion on the heat building, the heat system, and also discussing the front of the arts man. Bruce, you wanna talk to us about that, please?
Okay, I'll do the best I can as quickly as I can. I sent you all a copy, I made a mess there. Couple of few copies, kind of dirty, but I wanted to... Here we go. Copy of the bid that I got for heat for the place. And I'll tell you how I let it...
Oh, I saw you know, but I didn't...
I just got it, so, came up. Okay, let me get myself organized so I can make this as quickly as possible. On March 21st, which is this meeting after the information meeting, I'd like to make a presentation to the board with hopefully all the numbers that it would take to do the following. To heat the building, to insulate the building, and to put fans in sanctuary. Okay, now I'm gonna back up. I met with Rick Perkins from Perkins Hooking last week. It turns out I've known him for thirty years, just never knew his name because he was involved in Mero Gas. And I've been buying Mero Gas, Mero Gas since nineteen seventy-eight and until the time that they went by-bus. But anyway, we had a nice discussion, and I told him what I was interested in. And I was actually led to him by Mark Bills. Initially, Scott Bovat was discussing with me about heating the building with propane or some other way. And which led me to FWW, and you've already known that discussion, so I don't really have to read that. So we met for about a half an hour, and this is what I found out. This building, first off, I should say, the negatives. The stoves in the addition, forget it.
What do you mean, stoves?
The heaters.
The brown ones that are in the meeting room, not the sanctuary. The sanctuary is the church part.
Correct.
The two big brown...
He said they're not a code, they're in a non-high-line chimney, and they're probably rusted, heard.
Not a high-line chimney, that is a problem.
That is a problem. He also said, "We're gonna have a problem with the gas stoves that are in the kitchen because they're the match kind, and that's why we're filing a code down."
We do have money that was given to replace those, and LEM is gonna work on that at some point.
Yeah, what was the intent of a thousand dollars?
Specifically said, kitchen only.
Yeah, I know for kitchen only, but was this, I mean, specific? Was it for stoves?
No, just kitchen.
Generally, kitchen.
Kitchen.
Okay. So, he kept this commitment. He initially gave me this brochure to show the unit that will be put in the church, which is this one right here, I'll let you all look at it. And the size of it is thirty-six and five-eighths inch wide by twenty-six and three-eighths inch high by thirteen inches deep. And there would be two of them, one on either side of the building, either side of the building, in the sanctuary, and one in the addition. So I'm gonna show you a picture of it, and I'm also gonna also point you to a picture of what the vent looks like. He brought it and showed it to me. The vent, the housing of the vent is four inches. The tube that actually goes through the wall is about three inches. I didn't measure it myself, but it looked like three inches as far as I could tell. So that's it, to go through the wall. One on either side, one in the addition. Here, take a look at that for a second.
Isn't that kind of linai that we used to have at the...
This is what's in the yoga studio.
All of us love, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, they're good, they're a good...
Same renai here, but...
They're a good product.
I don't know if it's the same size or the same... It's exactly the same.
They work really well.
Wall mounted perpents, same thing. Same vent.
And it's not much of a shapable either.
So we thought, too, would eat the...
We believe them, we spent a similar time, we looked at the sanctuary, and we joked about the wistows, and, you know, he spends the time. I mean, we looked at him, and he told me what he thought would be... Say that for the presentation, and what he thought should be done as far as where it should go. But the estimate is excellent because it's thorough. I gave you all copies, and as you look down, you'll see it's a complete install. It's running the gas lines underneath it. It's a complete install, there's no BS around that. Okay, that's that. I also further discussed with him, like I did with FWW last year, my thoughts about insulating the cap, which I was crucified for at the committee here.
Absolutely, it's...
Yes, got a statement?
No.
Okay. You're entitled to your opinion, but, okay. And my thought was, and both FWW and Rick Perkins agreed, that anything you can do to keep the heat down is gonna make it more comfortable and easier to heat.
That's what you have on fans.
Mm-hmm. Fans and capping the ceilings with roof. And that's the addition and the sanctuary. And we had got an estimate several years ago from Farkham, I believe it's the insulation company, to do the entire addition. That was including walls, building, walls.
I remember that.
But pardon?
I don't remember that.
I think Leanne was pretty much principal part of that, and I believe she's got the copy of it.
I didn't know the select board, it was at the meeting house. Okay, thank you.
Church Command. And I don't remember what the bid was. But anyway. So I brought something to show you. Just let me look at my, keep myself organized so I can make sure I'm going in order, so maybe just quickly. When I went in there, it should be noted, when I went in there to meet with him, it was forty-one degrees that day, when I left, forty-one degrees in my car. That building was considerably colder than forty-one degrees. And if I was a betting man, I'd say it was below freezing in that building. Okay? So as far as you, what I'm drawing, as far as using that building, you're looking at three months a year, at the most, four months a year, given the present situation, because you never get the present one. It ain't gonna happen, it's just that simple. So, that being said, several things. There's a, there's a... Vermont Arts Council's offering, just correspondingly offering grant assistance, how to do the grant, several times during the springtime because their grant is May 1st. It just so happens that they're gonna have a grant, it's a couple-hour thing.
Workshop.
Grant workshop on the 21st of March, that afternoon, before our select board meeting, which kind of worked very nicely, so I can... I'll go to it and find and get all what I can get out of it. I know Michelle Bailey really well, so I asked some specific questions to ask her. First, really more about, since we don't have ADA, how's that gonna affect running a grant before we be shunned because of it? That being said, I'll go back to my idea about the insulating and the windows, about insulating and the fans. The fans are self-explanatory, I could get Peter Meyer involved in that, I'm sure I could get help from him on advice as far as wiring. And as far as the grant goes, I do know this, that labor counts towards your match. So, we put in two, let's say, we got a quote, "To do everything for twenty thousand dollars, and we have to match ten." We put thirty thousand dollars of labor into it, it's now seven because it comes off our match. As opposed to the Old Historic Preservation Society, there's no mention of that. Michelle Bailey and I spent a certain amount of time talking about that up in Arlington about it. And I was quite taken aback, really, you know? So if we do some labor, if we get help to lay insulation or get Peter Meyer to do our electrical, even though we've got a bid to install fans for three thousand dollars, we cut the labor part down and it goes towards our match.
To our benefit.
To our benefit. Now, I brought this in because this is a newer kind of insulation that's been around for several years, and it's called Roxol. I used it in my, I used it in my, in my house and my cap a year ago. And it's a much better insulation because it's denser, it's mineral-based, and Ed Rook was real high on it from WW, and he said, "Well, it won't bother you, like fiberglass, well, well, it does bother you a little bit."
Yeah. It's not as bad.
It's not fiberglass.
But it's still bad.
Yeah.
But the beauty of this stuff is, and I had a pretty much a big disagreement with Kerry Boyer, like, "Well, you have the joints is this wide, you're gonna get the insulation to fit, you're gonna heighten it?"
Yeah, you can cut, yeah, don't do it here.
I'm cutting it from...
I use a Japanese handsaw. You know a Japanese handsaw, Scott? It's a very thin, belated, double-sided handsaw that has two different kinds of blades on either side, and it cuts just like butter, so you can cut everything to fit. So basically...
You just feel like you just cut to the back.
Could do all the breakdown. And I'll bring it for the presentation. I just wanted to show you all because I wanted to show you how...
Well, and the R value of it is considerably higher than...
And that doesn't do anything with the preservation of the building?
This is what you're doing, Gwen.
Well, no, I know what you're doing.
No, no, as far as changing, as far as changing the historic nature of the building...
Listen, isn't that what they gave you a rough time about?
Yes, yes, but a part of that might have been because I was talking about making recessed holes in the ceiling of the sanctuary in order to develop heat. But that was about the only change physically that was happening to the building. And you know, I think, obviously, that you change physically in this situation with the heat would be the three-inch holes in the walls. Now, as far as the insulation goes, four guys can heat, can insulate that entire building, I'm talking about the cap, building, in under a day. What you do is you plasticize in between the joints. Of course, you have your measurements all structured.
We don't have to go into detail, I mean, insulation makes sense. I mean, you know, you insulate something that's not, I mean, heat something that's not insulated.
But the point, the point being is you're not...
Yes, you don't heat something that's not insulated, that's right. Then you're just heating the air outside.
Right, and you're not changing... Twenty years ago, twenty years from now, some select board instructs, "We're gonna take the insulation out of here," you haven't changed the structure of the building. You still got the same, you're not adding to a negative to build up condensation or anything like that, I'm getting to the end. So I'll go, I'll link again for the presentation on the 21st. That's basically what I'm doing. Getting my numbers together, make a presentation on the 21st, see if there's any negatives. You all, you all can decide if you're happy with it. If you are, then we'll talk about the grant writing after that. And lastly, Samara said that she helped me with it, because I've already looked at the application quite a while back. I looked at it, and I knew the budget part. Samara said, "Not a problem, we'll work that out." All the other nuts and bolts still...
So as have you, is anybody gonna notify anybody on the board that there is gonna be a presentation?
Yes, I'm gonna notify, well, I have to tell, I have to ask Leanne anyway, because I want that estimate, that was on my form. But I am gonna tell both, that both of them by email that I'm gonna have that presentation on the 21st, so. You wanna come, and you wanna pitch, well, I'm not gonna put it that way, but if you want, if you wanna have different ideas, let's put it that way, let's talk about it.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned, we should heat that, end of story.
All right.
How did I do it?
Pretty good, not bad. So on the 21st, we're gonna have, we're gonna edit probably a half now. How long would you like on the 21st? Thirty minutes?
Twenty minutes, we have that on.
Okay, twenty to thirty.
I'll do the, you've already heard most of it. It should be thoroughly cut.
So twenty minutes, you may have some time, you may have some discussion.
How long is it gonna do that? Ten?
I don't know.
About ten, about ten. Twenty minutes you cover it, unless you get into a...
Discussion, we'll need time some time for discussion.
Start asking a lot of questions, and that could extend it.
All right, so that's for the 21st, it's very good. All right, next, anything else on here? Next, we're going down to communications, comments and concerns. We don't have, anybody have, any of you wanna come up to them? Oh, I did have a question about, a resident did ask about how it was determined who got town plans because two voters in the same household, only one of them got the town plan, not the town plan, town report. And I said that there are extra town reports here at town hall. And if someone else needs...
It's also online.
It's also online, if someone needs to have an additional one, then the contractor doesn't stop by.
You guys are printed.
It's online, it's on the webpage.
It's on the webpage, it's got PDFs.
The whole PDF, right?
All right, that was the only thing that I got. Town report.
That's it.
All right. Email, we got email. David, you wanna bring this up and talk to us about that? I think I have a copy of it. About the Solar...
Yeah, just that this woman from Solar City, who was spoken previously to other people, had called me because she got my name off of the...
Webpage?
Webpage. And I said, "Okay, if you wanna send us information about what it is you're trying to get answers on from our town, we will look at it at our meeting." I said, "I can guarantee we can answer any of the things you're going to ask, but we'll certainly review whatever your..."
Basically, what I did is I scanned that letter to Sarah Jarvis up at the VLC.
Well, no, not yet, it's not Sarah, right. So the, so do we have a, I don't have it printed out.
I did print it out.
So what is...
So basically, Sol, this is, and I think it's come up before. She had indicated when she called me that...
December 14th was when we got the first letter.
Okay. And honestly, I couldn't even, I didn't remember that, though I remember the discussion about the questions they were asking, I didn't...
And at the select board meeting, it was determined that they would, we would steer them toward the website, which had the town plan on it, and I spoke to them on the phone, and I said, "It was page 27, section C, which, which addressed their concerns." But then I spoke to them. Well, here's what's happening with the Solar Media.
We should serve well, yeah.
They're trying to get their adoption order for everything. But as you see the reply from Sarah Jarvis, it's saying that unless it's a specific project, we know square footage and everything else, we can't address anything. And the Agency of Natural Resources is the one that you're gonna have to talk to anyway. And if there's net metering, that's another can of worms.
What does she want, though? Well, basically, so let me...
Do you have a copy of the letter?
Yes, I do.
Find the...
Because I didn't read this. She wanted us to sign off saying, "You were no misinquirens," and I said, "No, we're not gonna do that."
Wow. So, yeah, I mean, the email, the email that she sent to me said, "Hello, David, I'm inquiring about permitting and inspections requirements for Brooklyn and Vermont. If you could please review and fill out the attached document, I would greatly appreciate it."
This comes from Sarah?
No.
No.
This is from a company called Solar City. This is from a woman named Joy Newsy.
And that's what I, I scanned that and sent it to Sarah Jarvis.
This is...
Yeah, that's it. So basically, it says, "To whom it may concern, we at Solar City DBA Tesla Energy have recently expanded our product offerings and are aware that you may have in the past not required permitting and/or inspections for our projects. We would therefore appreciate if you could identify which of our product offerings would and would not require permitting and/or inspections. Page two, your signature is also requested to validate your responses. We would also greatly appreciate any documentation from your local code that can support any of your responses."
One way it makes me nervous, and one made, but it doesn't make me nervous. No, it makes me very nervous. It seems like a form letter, the kind that's going to every town in the valley. Uh, I don't know that, that's speculation, but the bottom line is that when you sign off on something like that, you don't know the particulars, you don't know what project they're talking about. And I, as my town agent had said, I said, "I didn't think it was a good idea," but I did speak with Sarah Jarvis, and we addressed it before, and she said the same thing I did, "It's something that we shouldn't do."
Right. I mean, and a few things to note about her points, right, is that without, basically, it's not possible to know which state laws and/or local zoning regulations will apply without knowing the exact location and size of the project, the amount of energy that will be generated, et cetera.
Oh, this is...
It's a net meter, right?
Right, exactly. And then the additional, that depending on, you know, the town's jurisdiction over the installation of solar panels depends entirely on whether the solar panels will be net metered. Generally, if net metered, the state has nearly exclusive control over their regulations. So the reality is, we couldn't answer, we couldn't indicate whether, without formal requests for permits.
I've taken three calls from her, she's sent emails to Gwen, she's sent emails to you, everything else, and again, I don't know what they're looking for, but the bottom line is that we shouldn't, in my opinion, we shouldn't sign off, and Sarah Jarvis, the letter that Sarah Jarvis answered the whole question.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, and after my experience with New Brook, God, he created...
Exactly.
We could say yes to a lot of things, but let me tell you, it's really, really difficult to get through all of the networks of everything you have to go through.
Oh, the layers of...
Oh, it's just infamable. So we don't have a worry here, other than, "You're right, in my opinion, don't respond to it, don't, don't..."
No, we can send it, well, I think we, I think...
We'll respond, but we don't say against your number.
I think we should respond, but we can't, we can't say whether they're...
We have responded, and that, they were directed, if you notice, let me have a little guy put a notation, that we contacted them and directed them to the town plan on the website, and if there is a particular project that they're installing, they'll have to come before the, you know...
Where are they from?
I think Marlborough, Massachusetts.
But the bottom line, I mean, the bottom line is that we can send a letter with the same verbiage that the attorney Jarvis sent us, and that's it.
I think that's...
That's the polite thing.
I think that's the appropriate response.
Guy, can I ask you to send off a letter to that effect as an agent?
Yeah, I could, maybe I can help my, have my assistant help me.
Maybe have your assistant, okay.
Why don't you ask about it? Was anybody interested? Guy got a big broken disc, I don't know if any of you...
No, it's not. All right.
Um, okay, so, yes.
All right, so the remedy is going to be that we will tell them that, we will say...
So we're gonna sign that as town agent?
We're not signing it, we're not signing, he's just gonna send a letter, he's gonna have you type it in.
Yeah, but the letter is signed by someone.
The select board chair can sign it, that's fine.
And you can call, come in.
Yeah, because it's gotta be, you know, signed by somebody.
Sure. Not a problem. All right, so anything else for emails? When I did get this in the email today, we'll take a look at it, Town Health Officer Training Series. Actually, that would do, I hate, I can't, you know, when they're going up to Burlington and North Vermont, it's really is difficult to attend these.
They keep repeating the same theory.
All right, so...
So what was that?
This is Town Health Officer Training, information of north, so we'll look at that. All right, so now we're gonna just go through the rest of the mail. We have a letter from Fresh Coat Asphalt Services. It's a letter of introduction to a painting, seal coating, line striping, crack sealing company, and it's a flyer for them. We can keep it on file for future reference.
Aye, this is good. Yeah, that's, yeah, this is perfect. Absolutely perfect.
Take a look at that. We had a letter from Prevent Child abuse Vermont. Nonprofit.
Well, it's a project, so people, for people to put in their gardens.
Oh, the Pinnell Gardens.
Is this, this isn't a company that do their seal coating, is it?
I'm not sure if this one actually has done seal coating, or was there a competitor? I do believe it's one of the two, it's one of the two companies that...
Responded to.
Responded, and I'm not sure which, I can tell you.
That's all right, that's all right.
Anybody wants to follow up on the collecting or selling pinwheels per dollar in town? Would you wanna follow up on this?
Basically, what they're doing, they're looking for a donation of $100, and basically put 100 wheels up, but, you know, yeah.
The third letter here is to the town clerk and select board, please enclose for your files is a copy of your 2018 certificate of highway mileage. Certificate includes town highway mileage changes reported to us in this past year, and these are the numbers that, oh, this is a copy of the paperwork that you signed last, last month.
So that goes in the file with the...
Goes in the file, but if you wanted to look at it, you can.
Oh, it's just copied.
It's just a copy of what we already did, they got it, and it's, and we did our... All right, and next was the...
Some of this goes back, Guy knows what to do with this.
Okay, section three, payers, so...
How was that?
That's it.
Better than doing that.
Oh, I wanna make, no, I think having the one recycling bin is working out, it's great.
Yeah, I think...
I think it has, right?
I think it, yes.
That was a really good idea.
I had to make a decision on Friday, I mean, on Thursday, because the bin was three quarters full, and I didn't want to let it to go through the weekend, because I know there would be overage, you know. So they probably didn't pull a fully loaded bin out on Friday afternoon, but it saved us some grief for the area. So I think, you know, so far it's been working out very well, and once they came on board and...
It's making people go to the other side.
Exactly, right, or open one of the other doors.
Well, again, what happened, when they pulled the other bin out, the bin where it was, was just total ice, and I could see why people didn't want to go there. People, you know, ice is a nasty thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Speaking of town meeting, we're gonna have, I'm gonna kinda be busy here in the office setting up for the election, so you still have a key for the school? Oh, it's in the car, don't let me forget. I give it, but I made a copy for myself. Well, that's another issue. Right now, we have... I lied. We have 40 keys, we have 40 keys for the town office, there's so many keys that... Don't worry about it. I'll give you, I'll give you your key back, and if you, you want somebody to be there, you want, start setting up early. Someone needs to be there to start getting the chairs out, either the night, no, not the night before, I don't think, the day before, and I don't think... It's not a one-person job. Well, the fact is that we're gonna start the meeting at nine, that means you're gonna have to be there around seven.
Or do it the night before.
Or do it at five. They might wanna run that past Tina, to make sure that that's okay with her.
Would someone like to take over that responsibility to contact Tina and to get the, Gwen, could you do that? Could you talk to Tina about allowing us in on the night before town meeting to set up?
What time does she close there, six?
Five.
Well, sometimes it's nine places, so...
Right, since Monday after, just go there on Monday afternoon and set up what she's done downstairs, do you have permission for it?
Right, we need to, that's what I'm saying, we need that to be arranged.
Only because she rents the building, and it'd be the right thing to do to ask her. Because I know, come nine o'clock the next morning, and who knows what the weather's gonna be like, or whatever, we need to be able to, to be ready for the meeting at nine o'clock. I just won't be able to be there because I'm gonna be here, in fact, Gwen's gonna be here, Gwen and I will be here setting up for...
Just make contact, yeah, that's all.
To get, to let her know we need to get in there.
We're gonna set up the night before.
Yep. Possibly. She's gotta be done by late afternoon downstairs, yeah. I don't know, you know, it's funny over there, you never know.
Gwen, here's this email, it says, "Tell her to email us," and then, I mean, I can come over that night, and set up chairs.
That's Monday, that's Monday. Fourth, third. I could come over this piece and be with, we can...
Yeah, I can come. Be here.
Let's just not make it six o'clock, we'll see what she says, I mean, depends on, it'd be nice if it was like four, four or five.
Yes, we can come over around four.
Yeah, that's great. Well, ask for what the earliest we could come over.
The earliest we can come.
That boy, that's why the town agent.
Careful with those Elton Jones glasses.
Yeah, the Elton Jones are usually bigger, aren't they?
You have Tina's number, right?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the county's payable warrant, 2018-32, dated 2/21/18.
Did you say payable?
County's payable warrant, 2018-32, in the amount of $9,553.32. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of signing off on the county's payable warrant, 2018-32, for $9,553.32, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is verified, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the payroll warrant, 2018-33, dated 2/21/18, in the amount of $1,910.35. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting payroll warrant, 2018-33, in the amount of $1,910.35, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Excellent. Now, now we're at number 13, setting the agenda for the reorganization meeting. I'm gonna pass something out to you all. Come on, I just had it here.
That's a problem.
Take one and pass it down. Okay, what I typed up is a draft for the agenda of the March 17th reorganization meeting.
March 7.
March 7. And it starts off with electing, with calling to order by the town clerk, electing the chair, and then moving on to look at the agenda, looking at the rules of procedure, approving tonight's minutes, and then scheduled and unscheduled members of the public, and then going on to the reorganization, which is vice chair, conflict of interest, recording clerk appointment, setting the time and place for select board meetings, establishing the official newspaper for posting of the meetings and the hearings. It isn't, the road commissioner is an appointment, I double-checked that, we appoint representatives to Wyndham Regional, emergency managers, 911 coordinators, town court keepers, animal control officers, historical society, women, self-waists, representative to rescues, replant planning, meeting house committee, Sunnyland Daycare property manager, road supervisor, service officer, surveyor, wood, and tree warden. I looked over the list of those currently in those positions, and some of those committees are very inactive, and I was wondering how to approach the inactive committee chairs to see if they would like to come step off of the committee and make it available to someone else, or how do we do this?
Some of those committees are elected officials, I think.
None of these on that here are elected, these are all the appointments, the ones occur at the...
Is the cemetery commission, that's a, elected?
That's gonna be done at town meeting.
Right.
This is the reorganization meeting.
Right, no, and I understand, I thought, I was, I was trying to understand which committees you were... The big one is the historical society, because we're getting nothing from that. And again, those are elected, they're elected.
Historical is not elected.
No.
It's appointments.
Wait.
Go look in the town...
Oh, okay, no, that's fine.
Yeah, these are, these are...
I remember when we had Jack Green, so I guess here you appointed...
If the chair of the committee is not calling the meetings, then the other, I don't know.
Right.
We need to come, we have inactive committees, so I was wondering what we can do about this in the area.
Yeah, L isn't, L isn't working at all. L isn't working at all. That's all. There's nothing happening, there's never a meeting, the chair is Cynthia now, God bless her, but...
Cynthia now has announced her retirement from the school system, this is her last year, so she is retiring, she's a school owner, she gives her work time, or she's depending on doing other things. So how do we, how do we, I mean, why would we be arbitrarily appointing people if we don't do it? Well, we don't even know if they wanna be appointed, so how does... On that, this is my first year, leading my first year as select board chair.
Right.
I'd like to see something changed.
Well, so maybe where we start is trying to send out some communication, and we need publicize the fact that, you know, we have a historical society, and we're looking for people who are interested in, describe what they do, because, I mean, honestly, I don't know what they do, because I'm not sure they've ever met during the time that I've...
They have not.
So what the, I, I don't honestly know what the purpose of the historical society, that's all.
Well, they were to spend a...
I'm sorry, the guy doesn't, but the point is, if I don't know what they do, the odds of people in the town who haven't been part of it before being interested in being on it is probably not great. So maybe the starting point with that, and also with the meeting house committee, at least, if not others, is to try to put out the word about what these groups do and can do to try to solve this, it's people who are interested.
My question, my question is, historically, just same people just get appointed, but they don't even know they were appointed. Year after year.
Right, but so...
Well, again, at the organizational meeting, if you don't have a strong person that you really feel is interested, you can, you can go over that, bypass it, and do it at another meeting until you have an opportunity to talk to them.
We didn't have a rescue in person for the longest time, until someone presented themselves that was interested in doing it. I mean, maybe we handle this the same way, that we decide, okay, we're not going to just appoint the same people if they haven't actually demonstrated that they want to do it. I mean, they might be happy to not be appointed to it, and they might be doing it just because they feel like they should. Because effectively, it's true, in the case of, I mean, not, nothing against Cynthia or Doug or Jack, but we could have just as well not had, not had the historical society.
And then the select board would be...
Wouldn't have changed anything.
The select board would be in charge of it.
Right.
Exactly.
And in a way, if we didn't have people on these, if we, if we didn't have people automatically appointed to them, maybe it would motivate us and others a little bit more to try to drum up interest in it.
Okay.
Maybe I'm looking for is someone to contact each person that has been on the previous appointment list, and see if they are still student running again, or being appointed.
We're, what, 10 days away, or two weeks away from town meeting? Why don't we bring it up then, saying we, we have...
Because the next day is the next, is the day we do it.
But if you don't have anybody, you don't have to...
Right, but if we don't have anyone, we don't appoint anyone.
Exactly. We don't have to. We can always, I know what you're trying to do.
We can always, I know what you're trying to do.
Right.
Which is great, but it's not life and death. Well, your desire results is what we're after. And before, you put an ad in with Julie from, right? All I know is it was Bernadine that did it after last year, and we got no response.
She actually got response for a couple of things when you put it out.
You did, right.
Did you?
Right, for the, for the rescue week, for instance.
Yep.
And for the school board.
And how about David for, how did you get on the recycle thing with?
That's because he was, he was our Wyndham solid base.
No, in the first place, because you put out a
So front porch for the
Bernadine or somebody put out an email through Julie's list, saying that there were these spots that had no representation. Yeah?
I think it'd be really good to enter
But you're totally right, Tom. I mean, we're all, I think we're all completely in agreement.
Yes.
I think, just to Bruce's point and Guy's point, that I do think we should maybe try to find an opportunity to talk it up a little bit at town meeting and/or, and publicize it. But if, if we don't have anybody that is interested on March seventh, then we don't appoint anyone.
Now, as far as
And we think of other ways to try to get people interested.
And this discussion, Dave, with this discussion on town meeting should bring in, well, we have the way you get people interested
But this is not a town meeting agenda item.
But it's
But it could come under the business at the end.
Yeah. At the end, yeah, right. At the very end. And just say, look, this is what we're planning to do with the churches, what we're planning to do with the round schoolhouse. We need new members to help with it, and we wanna know if anybody's interested. These are the ideas we have. And you're not gonna get anybody interested unless they're interested. And the only way you're gonna get them interested is if they're interested in what you're doing. Well, you also have to let them know what the responsibilities and obligations are.
That's true. You know, and
So what is the historical society? What
The round schoolhouse.
Round schoolhouse.
And it could be, could also be, historical society and the, and the meeting house that's all historical, it's not, it's not a historical building?
Yes, it is, but it is not, hasn't been under their auspices.
Can't be, can't be beed.
Dovetail? Why not? Why not?
For, for the, you mean for the Brookline Meeting House and the
And the round
Historical, that's the whole point of trying to renovate it.
I think what happened, and excuse me if I don't know the exact historical significance of what happened before, but you had separate entities before.
Yeah, we just got the church.
Correct, that's true, but they had, they also had, they had a committee before.
The Ladies Benevolent Society. That wasn't town property.
That's correct.
So the town property thing, the historic building that we, that we purchased for a dollar, or got donated from the Ladies Benevolent, is part of the historical
I think plan is, plan is one of the great ideas. Dovetail and the two together just makes gold sense in the world.
Well, yeah, because nobody does anything with the, with the round schoolhouse, other than, they had, you know, they had money specifically donated to do something with the round schoolhouse, period. Same thing with the, with the kitchen, with any
I will say this, though, the round schoolhouse, Cynthia
Cynthia
for Columbus Day cleans that place out,
Right.
brings in flowers and does a lot of work there, and opens it for that day, so
She did clean it down. She said it was real musty and
We don't wanna, we don't wanna kill her.
No, we don't still have to for the things that she
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Over the years, and she should know that specifically, but we need to move forward. And like Doc has brought up the issue that
So should they be kept separate because they're two separate types of buildings?
Um, I, I don't know. To be honest, I don't know if there's any
Probably a larger endeavor and discussion to decide whether
Anyway, so I was just
At this point, because they're both somewhat struggling to have an identity, maybe it makes sense for us and to solicit the people who've been involved in it, obviously, who know more than we do,
I mean, we lost some money
Think about re-envisioning how this meeting works.
Do you want me to
Probably not something we're doing until
Put out something to Julie saying the appointments of, what are you going to do?
We've been looking forward to your input.
I mean, I put this draft, God, you can post this online tomorrow as a draft.
We've been looking forward, looking forward to your opinions at town meeting, because we're entertaining changes in the structure of the
Of the point
Meeting House Committee
Position for
And for the round, a round schoolhouse committee, and we're looking forward to your input and ideas and directions, because we have some of our own. We need new blood.
What you want, you wanna write, you wanna write this in here? This one I'll say.
Order it, hell, of course.
I mean, can I ask, is it reasonable to basically narrow this down to the historical society and the meeting house committee? Because looking through this, I mean, we have an active planning commission, and the people on it, yes, there's a vacancy. But, you know, they're meeting, they're doing stuff. Honestly, I don't know that there's anything, any other position or committees on this list.
Someone would call each person and say, do you want to continue as lead for this? You're on it last year. Do you want it to be, you want to be considered for an appointment next year? Do you want to be considered for an appointment at our reorganization meeting? I need some footwork done. I can't do it. I'm too busy. I have too much going on.
How many did you want?
Gwen, do you want to be assistant town clerk again?
Yeah, but we don't appoint.
No, I know, but that's great, because I'm just taking care of the first person on the list.
But he, we, the select board does not appoint that. The town clerk appoints it. So don't be smart.
It's not on this list.
We hire them to be smart.
Assistant town clerk is not on my list of agenda items.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not looking for agenda items. I'm listening, I'm looking at the appointments.
Let's, let's, let's keep it simple. Keep it simple, stupid. And just keep it to the two committees. I don't know why I have to worry about everything else.
Well, but, no, I mean, I think Doc makes a good point. I mean, we can't assume, and it's unfortunately, the way the schedule of things falls, we have town meeting, and then the very next day, we're having our
Organization thing, yeah, that's
I mean, normally, we would have a bit more of a buffer, but we don't. I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy to be part of splitting up the list of appointments and talking to some of these people. Sure.
Who do you
I mean, the road commissioner?
I've got to ask him. I mean, yeah, just reconfirm. They would like to appoint you if you're interested. Is that okay? I don't wanna appoint someone, and then two weeks later, say, well, you never even asked me, and I don't wanna be it, or
Yep. All to, I'll call Archie. Can I ask him? I'm happy to do that. Regional, regional commission?
Yeah, I'm still
Okay, so that's one. But we have to talk to Cynthia. I don't know Cynthia. I'd suggest someone else talks. I mean, I know it hasn't been easy to get a hold of Cynthia, but there's a number of things
Cynthia needs to be asked about the
Historical society, cemetery commission.
Historical society, cemetery commission.
Wyndham Regional Commission, she's a Wyndham Regional Commissioner?
I can take care of the treasures.
So Cynthia does
Three things.
Okay, I'll call Cynthia.
I'll take care of the assistant treasurer position all the free.
I'll call Nancy about animal control.
The assistant treasurer
I can do that. I see her every day.
Bruce.
No, assistant treasurer is
Is appointed by the treasurer, not by the select
No, you have to look at my, Bruce, Bruce, you gotta look at what I did, because this is not, that's not it. This is, this is what we're responsible for.
Right, okay.
All right, so 911 coordinator guy?
Yeah, I'm still there.
Okay. Town keeper?
That would be, we'd have a contract.
We have a contract.
So that's not a problem.
So that would probably
You don't have to worry about that, huh?
Animal control officer, check two.
I will call Nancy.
And, and you're, you're still only the deputy one?
Well, we don't
We don't, yeah.
We don't call that.
All right, historical society, Nancy Wayne.
Oh, we need to call, who else is on the historical side?
Uh, Jack Green, Cynthia now, Doug Wellman.
So can you, so I need to call Doug?
Jack.
And Jack.
And Cynthia.
And Cynthia. And that's for the historical society.
But if they agree, yes, we're back to where we are in the first place.
Well, no, there's two different things. There's two different tasks. One of them, one of the tasks is just confirming the people who we think are probably okay with continuing. And then there's the separate task of what do we do about
In that
So I think when you make that phone call, you need to say, we're going through appointments by the select board for the historical society.
And we noticed you haven't met in two years.
You haven't had anything in the last two years. Are you still interested on being on that committee?
Right.
Or not?
He does that good.
Well, no, it's true. I mean, it's true.
Now, what did I just say?
You'll remember. You'll remember what you have to do. Okay, Wyndham Solid Waste, sure, I'll do it again.
Property managers for Sunnyland daycare, that's Mark Bills.
Rescue Inc.
I don't know
Is Jordan?
I don't know her.
I'll call her.
Okay.
Who was that?
Jordan.
Jordan.
Oh, yes, Jordan Dana. Yeah, she's, yeah, she works up at Grace College. She's a not a family
I appreciate you taking everybody speaking up, making calls, because I
Brookline Planning Commission, just three or four people on that.
So here's the thing about the planning commission that I'm slightly confused by, because they have
A term.
Terms.
Right.
So how exactly does that work?
So that's true, only if the term is up.
According to this, and of course, I'm not sure where I got these dates, to be honest. Suzanne is the only one whose term is up, according to this.
And you drop, so that's what we need to find out if she's interested in, and if, yeah, and if they know someone who to fill the vacancy.
Karen, I'm sure Doug and Jack.
I can't remember. So you're saying the planning commission is appointed by the select board?
Town officer's appointed. It's on the appointed page, correct.
Now, do we all do this, just about?
That's, that's how
All right, so you appoint them for a three-year term?
Okay.
Some of them are appointed for their term.
Yeah, I don't know how we
Barbara Warren's term expires in 2022.
Don't worry about that.
That's five years.
Five years, okay.
They have five years.
Yeah, there's three or five. I couldn't remember.
All right, all to staggering five-year terms? Is that the way it works? I mean
Yes.
All, all the positions on the planning commission are five-year terms?
Correct.
Suzanne, yeah, it looks like.
I'll call Suzanne. Meeting house.
That's, we're gonna, that's
That's something I think we need to
Talk about.
Figure out.
Right, because right now, there's only two.
Right. And I'm sure that both of them are happy to continue, but that they need more
They need mail or other
But I think the entertaining idea of dovetailing with the, with the historical society is not a bad idea.
Yeah.
That was a good idea.
Oh, the property manager.
We appointed, yeah, we, we, we appointed Mark, we appointed Mark last meeting.
Right, yeah, so that's fine. The road supervisor, I don't have to worry about, as long as they wanna do it.
Well, I think they, they were both
Mark's okay. Mark is very pleased.
What is the service officer? Is that where we get the contract for the police?
The what?
What is Cynthia's
It's Cynthia.
Cynthia.
Yeah, right, that was basically, that doesn't exist anymore, because the state took over those, those things. It was any event someone needed help in the middle of the night, and you had to, you know, you had to put someone up for a night, or maybe go get them somewhere, get them some food. I think the state took over that
Isn't that what Mrs. Bowles does?
What?
I think she works for the state and picks up people and kids that are in
Who was this?
Mrs. Bowell.
I think she's Lyndell, Lyndell Bow.
I think she's in conjunction with the courts.
Yes, the state has taken over the service, so we can actually drop that.
Get rid of it.
Okay.
Now, we're done with that?
Appointment of surveyor wood, is that something we still have to have?
Uh, I don't know. You know, some of these are
They say they just left it on just for the
Yeah, they were saying, but I don't know. Who did we have there? Did we have Lester Rank or
Sunny.
Yeah.
Sunny Rank?
And now you have a
And tree warden was Sunny and
Mark Bill.
Mark.
Tree Bill. Surveyor Wood and Lambert was Lester and forest fire was Lester and Mike Wyena. Okay.
Does anybody know if Chris is gonna
Yeah, the fire marshal, that's appointed by the state.
That's not on my list.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We just have a tree warden and new lumberjack surveyors.
Yeah, I don't, well, they're, I, I don't know. I'd have to look and see what, what they're really responsible for.
Is Chris gonna run for Blackboard?
Yes, he put that in his, in his
And how about you, Gwen?
Yeah.
Great, so this will be the first year that we have that, okay?
Consistency really makes
Oh, without a doubt.
Thank you very much for understanding the fact that I can't make all the calls and
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, perfect. So that would be our, that is our agenda for our reorganization meeting.
I won't post it until, you know, two days before, because
Gotcha.
Just
Just because it's
I think it might change.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Okay, and you can always add, if anybody has anything they wanted to add to the agenda, please let me know. This is the point of it. And at this point now, we are
Unless you want me to post it.
Because it says draft.
I have some question. Are we taking the bull by the horn as far as notifying town? I just looked at the town book, and it's in there, start at nine o'clock, but is Julie gonna put it out?
I'm gonna, I am, that's part of my, I have here, I told to David Parker, I have to, I'll check with
Guy, you can have a blip in that little, you know, what's new?
Oh, yeah, no, I can do it on the webpage.
What's new on the webpage?
The biggest thing, the problem with the billboard sign is that it was just covered with ice there. I couldn't put up, you know, for the taxes and everything. It's a real dilemma.
Because that, we usually do put up, but there's no place to put it.
I will contact the community through Julie's list, sir, and talk to David Parker. I'll check with Sarah Webb, with about the lunch.
Front porch
Front porch forum.
At nine o'clock, too.
Correct. And I'll advertise the hearing for the town plan vote, and make sure that things are in roll for our dog hearing, which is next week. Okay, so, all right. So we're down to board number fourteen. I'll take it. Anybody wanna do number fourteen?
I would be happy to entertain a journey. I've had enough of Doc for one night.
Just kidding, Doug.
Thanks, Greg. Seconded by Gwen. Any discussion? All those in favor of agreeing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. It's nine P M. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.